Okay, I will start today's meeting. Thank you for joining us for the City Council Workshop. For the record, it's Tuesday, June 12th. It's 3:00. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in a pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton?
We have a couple of changes. Item 9A, the Ordinance 18-1783, will be removed from today's agenda. And item 11, the Executive Session, we will add subsections A and D as additional basis for the Executive Session. And with those amendments, I would move that we adopt the agenda. Second?
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alize, item four, our Consent Agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton?
There are no changes to the Consent Agenda, so I would move that we approve it as published and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
There were no items moved from the Consent Agenda, so we will move to our community presentations. We have item 6A under Fill the Boot.
Hello, my name is April Gannon and I'm with the Muscular Dystrophy Association. Wanted to start out and thank the City Council and the mayor for allowing me to speak today. My job at MDA is to help with events that serve our local families. So we cover southwestern Idaho, including Meridian, and we serve over 600 families living with muscular dystrophy, ALS, and other life-threatening diseases. We have a lot of programs to support the local community, so that includes a clinic at St. Luke's in Boise, support groups at St. Luke's in Meridian, and a overnight, cost-free summer camp for kids ages 8 to 17 living with our diseases. We also support research as well. And we wouldn't be able to provide these services without the support of firefighters. So, one of our big events that we do is our Fill the Boot, which took place with the Meridian Fire, Local 4627, on May 17. And I'm very proud to say they raised $18,209 in one day, one intersection.[213.18][213.18][applause]
Yeah, they're the only ones brave enough to stand out there.[220.14][220.14][laughing]
And they have raised over $83,000 in the last five years to support MDA. So it was a huge turnout this year. There was only one day, like I said, and one intersection, but a lot of boots and a lot of heart went into it. So just wanted to thank the fire department and then, of course, the support from the city. We had a lot of support from, in particular, Casey Emery helped us promote the event, helped us create videos to help promote, and also thank the community after the event. And we also worked with Judy Gerhart, who helped promote the event for the Meridian Fire Department side as well. I also wanted to thank Sean Steer, who helped recruit for this year. And then a special thanks to the man sitting next to me, Dan Krenz, who's been our coordinator for the last four years and has really helped make this event a success. So just wanted to thank all of you for your support as well. Just so you know, on the research side, we've seen some amazing advancements. When I started four years ago with MDA, part of my talking points when I started was, "In the next 15 years, we're going to see more progress than in the last 50 years." And that's already rung true. So in the last two years, we've had four FDA-approved drugs that support our diseases, three of which are actually not only helping to stop progression, but they're actually helping build muscle strength in our families, which is huge. I just talked to the Washington office and they let us know that one of their kids that was in a wheelchair is now in leg braces. We've seen kids that are now able to grip a pencil, which sounds so simple, but it's so many things that we take for granted. So many of our kids can't even take a drink of water without having their parents hand them a cup with a straw. So many of our kids can't walk. So many of our kids can't go swimming in the summer or, you know, do the normal things that we picture what a child should do. So we can't thank everyone enough for all their support. And then, of course, the local community. This event is one of my favorites because it's true to the $1 makes a difference. A lot of this is people just throwing their change, you know, that $2 bill they kept in their wallet for a year. And it really does add up. And it's so many people that didn't plan to make a donation, didn't plan to stop or fill the boot, but saw, you know, a firefighter standing there asking them to support a great cause that supports the community, and they did it. So just wanted to send a thank you and, yeah, wanted to thank you as well for all your support.
Thank you so much. I did want to, I appreciate that you called out both Judy and Casey. Because Casey also put out, you know, if you want to avoid this area, feel free to because Fill the Boot was coming on. But so those that drove through there wanted to drive through there and I think that helped it be a little bit more efficient in getting better flows. But, and I think just to Dan, we've improved just using one intersection because we used to do more. And I think you're netting great results with that change. So congratulations to our firefighters and their efforts, too.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, it's not really me. It's more the guys in the department and what they want to do for the community. They really have the passion to have that community outreach. And so it's really them that want to do it. It's them that are actually doing it and making us as successful as it is.
That's the way it is in everything.
Yeah. He's being modest, though. He does a great job helping inspire and recruit. Yeah, so we're very, yeah, fortunate. And actually, I was telling him, I was looking at the numbers from the last five years. And five years ago, we raised a little bit over $19,000, but that was with two intersections. So to see one day raise $18,209 is so amazing. And to get more people out there, it helps make it safer to get more of that information out to the community of where the firefighters are going to be, when, what to watch out for, avoid it if you want to. That messaging helps it make it safer for them as well, so that's huge.
Agreed. Well, on behalf of the Firemen's Association and everything that you guys do in this community and are so passionate about, congratulations. This shows the generosity and philanthropic giving that our community is known for. But, and how our community supports our firemen, so.
Yeah.
Great news.
Thank you.
I have a little request, if you have time. If not, it's totally fine. I was going to see if we could do a group picture that we could post on social media today, if possible.
I don't know about that.
Let's do it.[527.88][527.88][laughing] Put it up front.
Okay, yeah. Maybe in front of here. We've also brought some plaques as well that we can have in the picture.
Sounds good.
Okay, item 7A is under our Old City Hall RFP update and proposed amendment.
Madam Mayor, members of council, it's a pleasure to be with you. Let's see here. Let's see if I can get this. Apologize, this may show up a little small here. Just real quickly, wanted to provide a quick update to you all on the progress of the Old City Hall RFP and how that's going. And then also, we have a packet in front of you that entails an addendum, the purpose of which is to try to assimilate all of the questions that we've received from potential participants, answer them in one big fell swoop, and then present that to our, to that group at our pre-proposal meeting on Monday, the 18th. So real quickly, just want to kind of walk through this. We do have, to date, 38 people that have requested the RFP. Of course, that may mean a lot more people are engaged in it. You know, they may be assembling development teams and what have you. But we're very, knock on wood, pleased with the response and looking forward to kind of this next phase of the process, which is to really engage with those potential participants and answer any questions that we can to really start driving forward toward the bid date in July and then ultimately to the selection process. So we're feeling good about where we are at this point. So just walking through here, you see the title page. A couple of things to note. We will be changing a few things. The, where it says "the parties," we will change that back to MDC, just given that this is an MDC document. But, and then we will fill in the number of pages there on number, page number one, once we kind of understand exactly what you're comfortable with, including in this addendum. But you see here, the first question, there's been a lot of questions about zoning. What can we do? Things like, you know, parking requirements, height requirements, things of that nature. And so that's actually, again, encouraging from my perspective. People are looking at this in various ways and that's being borne out by the questions that they're asking. So we've tried to refer them to specific places in the RFP that that's already been addressed and/or let them know exactly where they can go to find that information. You see there, question three. You know, do we envision some kind of a public-private partnership or other type arrangement? Again, this is interesting to me. Again, we put this out in the purpose of and in the mode of being an open process, want them to provide maybe what their vision may be. And I think this is, again, an encouraging sign that people are looking at this fairly broadly. And quite frankly, I don't know that we want to dictate, per se, what exactly that partnership could be because we want to see what those ideas and proposals would be back. But you can see there, you know, we want to, you know, we envision some type of partnership as in the realm of possibility. We've listed a few partners here, you know, public and nonprofit. We may add a few more. We've had some commentary back on a few that we could include, like New Ventures Lab and Harvest Church and others, but certainly open to your feedback on that as well, who is appropriate to include and/or that we could either include in the addendum and/or invite to the pre-proposal meeting to actually meet with these folks. So keep that in mind. We've also received an inquiry about, you know, what kind of public projects are going on already. So I get the sense that this question was kind of in the vein of, well, what is the changing landscape currently? You know, is there road projects? Is there other developments that are going on? So this was kind of a, an inquiry that I thought was, again, people looking at this pretty deeply and wanting to understand exactly what's going on on the ground. So we have a few here that were included that, you know, MDC has met with and were, the city has had pre-application meetings with. And then we've included a list of attachments. These were primarily for, again, to answer questions that folks may have. Things like, we wanted to provide a preliminary title report, so give them the legal description of the property, you know, those types of things. So you'll see there, there's a fairly lengthy, and I'll just speed through that, but preliminary title report. Then we've also included the basic floor plan of the property as well as the site plan so that, again, people can get those conditions on the ground of what they're looking at. And then finally, the last attachment is essentially, again, some of the, you know, zoning code and zoning law, some of the UDC information that can be helpful to inform a potential respondent. So with that, oh, excuse me. There were also, there were some inquiries and so that's the addendum somewhat as drafted. We also wanted to present to you, there was, there were two inquiries about other potential properties that the city owned. And so we wanted to somewhat separate this from the addendum, given some of the comments that we had heard earlier as well as from the MDC board in this regard. So just note that we have received that inquiry but want to present this to you. If you feel like that's something you want to add or not, we'll, we can have a discussion and/or explore that. But you can see here, we've prepared some of those city-owned properties as well as, you know, an electronic listing of that. And with that, Todd has crafted, you know, a good response to make sure we're not leading any of these respondents astray. In other words, you know, we're not requiring that they do things with these. It's just for their general information. There's, some of them may not even be necessarily eligible for some type of partnership. It's just more for their information, essentially. Is that fair, Todd? So he crafted the legalese, but, so again, just want to kind of separate this somewhat from the addendum itself. But if you feel so inclined to include that, we can certainly do that as well. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll stand for any questions. And again, just excited about what this means and where we're at in the process to keep this rolling.
Thank you, Cameron. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I think I probably have a few in here. Thank you, Cameron.
You bet.
You're mentioning public partnerships and you mentioned Harvest Church. I guess I was a little bit confused by that because is Harvest Church a public entity? Is it privately owned? Because if you're going to mention things that are not public as public partnerships, then there's so many others that need to be listed out.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum, a great point. I think, again, we'll kind of take our guidance from you all. We've kind of kept this more to the public side. If you'll note, pretty much, actually, everyone mentioned there is a public entity. So, but if you feel like you would like to include... Oh, I guess VVAP is probably a nonprofit.
Well, Main Street Markets, Trisrelli Children's Theater, and Boise Valley Economic Partnership.
Thank you.
Right, other ones.
So again, open to feedback there? If you'd like to exclude or, we're open to that. I guess maybe the reason for at least drafting it this way is that these were known folks that could be potential partners. So, open to any feedback that you have.
I guess Ms. Mylum brings up a good point. With Harvest Church, that is a neighboring partner. They've offered to participate in a public parking project for downtown. And so maybe it's a list of potential public partners and public partners and resources. But it, that does open up a whole host of additional things to list. But I don't know if it's a bad thing to list more information and let people do their own due diligence and, or not enough.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
And I was, as I was thinking about that and reading through it, I think it would be best to list all of them, the bank, but maybe in a separate, not maybe included in this, but it wouldn't hurt if you want to talk to these neighboring properties and see if they are interested in participating. And that's up to them. So at least gives them, maybe broadens the thought process of how this, how big this project potentially could be and other resources that they might have to help participate in that.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I mean, these are grownups that are in the development world. I don't think we need to hold their hand and tell them about every possible business and entity within, you know, a few blocks that they might find interest in having a conversation with. I mean, I can tell you that there are people that are having conversations with those people anyway because they understand that that's what they need to be doing. I mean, include them or not, I don't know that it really matters, but I think maybe wording might be better to say potential partners from the public and public partners because the term "public partners in government" tends to...
Just potential partners. That's a good point.
Yeah, potential partners. Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I have to go on this too long. The only reason I really mention that because this came up in our, some similar conversations during our meetings prior. And we left out some of this stuff and now it's being asked because we thought, these are developers, they know what they're doing, but they're asking the questions that we either had resources for that they could have found or thought that they didn't need to be pointed in a certain direction. So now that they're asking the questions, I think I might as well put it out there.
And if you answer it for one, you might as well put it out there for all.
Exactly.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And to that point, I think the most important part of this is, well, at least to me, is that we're pointing out, hey, the city owns a bunch of property. Because, I mean, in the motion to move forward with this process, it was specifically directed to include the parking lot right out here as potential use for a project. I mean, that was ignored under the assumption that we're just going to see what happens. So I think that at least that information needs to get to them pronto that this could be so much bigger than the only, the square block across the street. Because I've had people calling me saying, you know, what am I supposed to do with that? Like, well, there's a lot more room in adjacent properties. Oh, we can look at those? Absolutely.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I agree 100% and I was pushing that way in our committee. So however, I think that this, I don't think that this map is what we should use. I think we should only use available properties, not Settlers Park or, you know, any other park or city-owned property. I think that we should have a list of available properties only. I think this is way too confusing.
Maybe better termed "underutilized."
Underutilized, yeah. Anything that has a potential to be used in this partnership, however much, you know, but, or in this project. I don't think that all city-owned properties have a potential to be used in this. And I think listing out however many 32 properties is, that's just muddying the waters, I think.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Yeah, and I don't disagree. I think it might even be wiser yet to list saying, this property, Bauer, the one right across the street, Old City Hall.
Parking lot.
And maybe that's all. And the community center.
Sure, Todd has a couple of questions for you.
Please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. For the record, Todd Lakey, legal counsel to MDC. I guess in crafting this, what I would hope is that we can have some particular direction. So if the city decides to narrow it down to five properties and we could say, again, there's no commitment on these properties, but here's some potential properties, there are others, you know, those kind of things. And then the private properties are a little more challenging. As we visited regarding those private properties, at least my first inclination was not to include private entities because who gets included and who doesn't? The, I do recognize there are some private ones on there. If the city wants to include private properties, then I ask for some specificity on what. What's our scope of that? How far from this property? Are we talking about the immediate block? I was more inclined to look at it and say, similar to Councilmember Palmer, these are private developers. They can contact a private party if they want to engage in a, some type of contractual arrangement to pursue development. But if you want a list, I guess I would just ask for kind of a specific area. My first inclination is not to include private property, but we're here to do what the city and MDC want to do. So we'll do what you want to do.
In these areas that have more than one lot as part of the entire thing, if you could just lump them together. So the parking lot across the street or the parking lot in front of City Hall or the community center area or Bauer Street, those are what I heard really called out. If it could be a little bit easier than five different numbers in one area and you're wondering, what?
Name.
If we just name them, yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I guess to your question as far as private property, I'm not, I'm okay if they're not listed on there. But in my mind, what I would list on there is the contiguous block. I mean, whatever's in that one square block would be potential partner for that property. But, I mean, obviously, somebody might want to go way beyond that. Who knows? I'm open.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
We're overcomplicating this.[1768.94][1768.94][laughing] So I say, change it to say, "List of potential partners" and then list whoever you want. Because then at that point, anyone's a potential partner and who could be offended? At least say, hey, here's nearby people. And then I would list this parking lot, anything that the city owns within five-minute walking distance, I would think. So the community center, this parking... So the community center, this parking lot, Old City Hall, right across the street, and Bauer. Because anything beyond that doesn't make sense for the realm of this project.
Ms. Mylum.
I have one other question. Why on the title insurance commitment is it, say, $10,000, or this is a liability? Or I said, oh, it says the sales price somewhere. Sales price, $10,000.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mylum, they just plug that in when it's a preliminary report, and the property isn't necessarily for sale, they just plug a number in. If, if this preliminary title report or title policy is actually used, then they'll put in an amount, and that'll relate to the fee for the title policy itself.
Good question.
Madam Mayor, so, just out of curiosity, you know, so if it's, if the sales price is zero, they just have like a standard, basic title policy that they run? How do they charge you for that, if they charge it based on the sales price?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mylum, that may be somewhat of a decision for the purchaser.
Never given it.
You know, an appraised value or something like that, if they're looking to insure for a certain amount of coverage. My guess is they probably won't want to insure it for zero. So, that would be, I think, decided at the time, yep.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Ms. Low Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I think we should go ahead and list New Ventures Lab. I think that we should list entities that are potentially partners, but I'm not crazy about listing the private, ones that own, but just the entities like New Ventures Lab, Main Street Market, VVIP. Those don't own anything, Children's, Treasure Valley Children's Theater, I think would all be great potential partners as far as tenant-type situations. But I don't know that we should list private landowners. We may get some people that are unhappy, but they can, I fully believe that our developers can walk around and talk to whoever they would like to. And then I think within a five-minute walk on the map is a great idea, just limit it to those.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And I'm cool with all that, if, if council wants that. I, I just think that we need to make sure that we understand, or that we have an agreement as to the types of tenants that we're hoping to, to have in there. To me, I want whoever's going to be on that property to be people with money of some level of means because we need people there that have the capability of spending money in downtown to kind of help save downtown Meridian. There's lots of feel-good potential tenants, like, you know, children's theaters and, and whoever else that, you know, make things look good for, for government. But to, to me, I need people living and working there that are there making good money so they can spend it while they're around town. So I, if, if, if we want feel-good stuff, then yeah, let's list, you know, the, the feel-good potential tenants and partners. I just, if we don't, if that's not our goal, is to have those tenants there, if it's to have tech companies and whoever else moving in, then I would hesitate to list those and, and have people try to build those kind of partnerships to then present it as a, try to sell us on that kind of thing if it's not really what we want.
I, I think just to build off of what Ann mentioned, I'm sorry, Ms. Low Roberts mentioned, if you could, at least if we don't list the, the private businesses or private property owners, at least give them notice that the general meeting will be held next week. And if they are interested, they can participate and listen to what's going on. That, that gives them some opportunity to see what's going on. If they want to engage, they'll have that opportunity as well. And, and maybe even use the, the radius that Councilmember Palmer had mentioned, a five-minute walking area, just to give them, so you get Eric Davis's property, and you get the McFadden's, and Saddle Shop, and the bank, and the church, and maybe even the other church. So those, those are, then the ball's in their court.
Madam Mayor, I, I like that idea. It, we're not, we're not putting them out there to, if they have no interest in participating, we don't want people knocking down their door, but, and certainly not from our angle. But we are giving that, them that opportunity to, to come to the meeting and participate if they so choose.
Right. Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
But in that, you meant, and specifically listing out the city properties, right? And plus, anything else within it, you may talk to somebody within a five-minute walking, but these, okay.
Is that enough direction?
Madam Mayor, I think so, other than it would be nice to know the average walking speed of Councilmember Palmer.
Very slow.
How about a half-mile radius? Does a half-mile radius work, or a quarter-mile, or, I don't know how fast he walks either, but I have seen him. If he has his stroller, he goes a lot faster.
Well, make that, make sense. Madam Mayor, we are looking for a, a motion in action to approve it so that we can include it in the, in the packet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I move, we approve the addendum with the suggested changes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Borton?
Stayin'.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item 8A is under our, oh, I, before I call up our next item, nothing, Cameron. I just want to recognize troop 153. We have two of our scouts out in the audience, and just want to say, thank you for joining us and good luck with your mayor badge. So, and, and see, you, you've already earned something with the pen today. So thank you for joining us. Okay, item 8A is under our department reports. We have our support services quarterly update, and I'll turn this over to our CFO, Mr. Lavoy.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, good afternoon. It's been a while. It's good to see you again. Appreciate the opportunity to present to you our quarterly update this quarter. No, go ahead. Thought it was a different one. This is our quarterly update. Today, we will be presenting to you kind of not financial information. It's a little surprising coming from us, but it's going to be our quarterly presentation on demographics, give you a little information on per capita, some permit data, and then what we look at, or what we consider what's next. So with this, we're going to start with the demographics section. Again, the next few slides, this is all data gathered in collaboration with Compass, using census data, working with Public Works, Community Development, and Finance Department. Again, we all worked together to put this data together. So with that, we'll go over a handful of graphs here real quick to show you what we're looking at from a demographics standpoint. Again, some of these might not be too surprising to you, but this is the city population. The most current number we have approved is a hundred, a little over 106,000. It's a pretty good growth since 2003, a little over 127%. Total utility accounts, it kind of goes hand in hand with the population that we add here to the city. Total FTEs, again, total FTEs represent the services, the resources we need to meet the services. I do want to point out that just recently, we as a city approved 21 FTEs for the Community Development Department. That does represent 12% of that 145% growth. So, we are showing that we need the resources to meet the needs. And then the last one is total park acres. Again, all these items here that we're looking at are all results of decisions that we make here at the council, we make here at the city. So everything that we work on impact the results of these indicators. The next four slide, or, I apologize, the next three slides are going to be more directly related to the permits, the applications, the plans that you approve or deny on a weekly basis. First example, single-family homes. You can see those have grown a little over 110% since 2003. Larger growth is multifamily homes. Again, direct impacts of decisions that you're making on the permits and plans and applications. The big winner here is our commercial square footage, again, showing a large growth there. And then, the last item we wanted to present to you is the total value of the city as reported by Ada County, or, since 2003. This next slide is a summation of the eight slides I've just shown you. And what I'm trying to depict here is the decisions that we're making as council, as city management, impacts everything that we do. And you can see what we've decided on is we want to grow, and we are growing. Every sector on this graph shows that we're growing phenomenally. The results of this do have a direct impact on what the mayor has to do with her as a CEO, with the executive branch. She needs to make sure that she has the resources to provide to the citizens, to the community, to our business partners, and last but not least, to her employees. She has to make sure she has the resources available to them all. And with this growth, among, upon growth, and upon more growth, unfortunately, comes costs. And I just want to make sure that what we're looking at here is the decisions that we make have direct impacts to many other things. And I just want to kind of show that, yeah, the park acres go up, but it's because we're increasing single-family and multifamily homes and commercial. We had Mr. McQuade here, the Ada County Assessor, last month. He presented to you his annual report. And within that, he had a common theme for the city of Meridian, or, and Ada County in general, growth. But he did use a special term for us, phenomenal growth. I think we can all agree with that. We, we've seen it, we live it, and we breathe it. I was talking to Mr. Palmer a couple of weeks ago, and I'm comfortable to say, I think we might be one of the fastest-growing cities in the entire nation, not only just Ada County. So, but with that, he mentioned city of Meridian's housing prices went up 10% in 2017. So if you're a homeowner, that's phenomenal. If you're a home buyer, that's a little bit more challenging. But he also left a seed for us, that in 2018, he thinks home prices will go up 20 more percent. So again, homeowners, awesome. Home buyers, a little bit scary. So again, that was just his projection. If it does do that, again, that's great for homeowners. But again, it's a concerning item for people who need to rent, people who need to buy. Again, those are just indicators that we're hearing. And I just want to bring to our attention, as the decisions we make here have lasting impacts on what our citizens have to afford, and what our employees can afford as, in regards to housing needs. So not only is housing go up, I think we can all tell that when we went to the gas station the last time, the gas prices are going up, utilities are going up. Everything is going up in all of our graphs. Every sector that we're managing, every data point that we're looking at, everything's pointing up from a cost of doing business. We also experience it in a cost of living. We know that we have to pay more for groceries, we have to pay more for utilities. Again, all the sectors are pointing in a common direction of up, unfortunately, and good. I mean, so it's a good and bad issue to have, but what, the end message here is, when we look at these indicators, when we work with the executive branch and the other agencies, we actually, we, we use this data to help drive our budgetary decisions, not only for the fiscal year Budget 19 that you're going to have discussions on tomorrow, but also our five- and 10-year plan. We look at these data points to determine which way we need to go. And we, we as executive branch must provide to you the resources that we need to accommodate the choices that we're making with the future and the current development as it is today. So again, I just wanted to show these graphs to you that, you know, we're, we're growing, and we have to make sure we're planning accordingly. The next slide here, again, more demographics, i- i- it's a good and bad slide. It's great for unemployment, but there's also unintended, or there's unfortunate consequences with this. As the unemployment rate goes down, which is a great problem to have, it's also a problem for those that have businesses. I know there's a few business owners up here. There's a few of us that make management decisions on who we hire. I think you're finding that the job market is getting more difficult. The competition is getting tight. We are all dealing with this every day, with this unemployment concern. But it's a good thing and a bad thing to have. We as a city are experiencing as well. I have a feeling that Cameron's going to be presenting some of these issues in his updated monthly reports to you about his 21 FTEs. You're going to hear from us in our budgetary request for 19. We're taking these items into consideration because we have to be marketable, we have to be competitive. You as business owners are probably seeing the same thing, the market is tight. As we get more talent here from people moving here, which is a good thing, it's very competitive to obtain that talent. And we must make sure that the city's in a strong position today and tomorrow to make sure we can obtain the talent and retain the talent that we have today. So again, as you see in tomorrow's budget, you, here's these items. Again, we take these data points into consideration when we build the budget for 19, but we're also taking into consideration as we develop our budget in the future. So that represents the demographic side that we look at when we develop our budget and planning process. We have one slide for per capita. I insert this here, or I insert this one graph in here because people do ask about per capita. Per capita is what we use as a kind of a smell test. This particular slide says, how many dollars do, would each citizen pay if they paid property taxes? Again, it's a per capita test. We know that citizens don't pay property tax. Property pays property tax, not the individual, every single citizen. So all 106,000 people don't pay property tax. The property pays the property tax. But again, it's a smell test, and people like to know what the per capita is. So again, we track this as a, you know, as an indicator. And you can see over the last 10 years, we've been pretty flat, which means we're not growing any faster, or we're not growing any slower. We're trying to stay afloat, we're trying to tread water, and we think to be, we think, we think we're doing a good job here. Again, it's the one slide that we do track and will show to you, but it's a per capita, it's a smell test. Again, we just want to present it to you that we do track and we do manage it. The next few slides are our permit data slides. This is a publication that we have access to, Land Pro Data. And there's one particular sentence in here that is something I want to bring to our attention. According to this Land Pro Data group, it's a pretty, it's alarming, scary, and good all at the same time. We're growing. They think that we're going to have some of the largest permit numbers since 2004, and 2004, five and six. I will show you a graph here in a second, second, that shows you what the numbers were back then. This, you know, has lasting impacts on how we as a city set ourselves up for success or failure. If we're growing at this phenomenal rate again, we must make the decisions today to make sure we can handle this influx of population and change that's coming down the road according to this permit data graph. Again, the next two slides are just going to show you the same thing. These are lots in MLS sales. It's not like the graphs over time are flattening out, they keep actually getting taller. Again, that just means more and more, more and more. We need to make sure we're setting ourselves up here because this puts a burden on the police department. They have more people to service, more infrastructure needs by day on the enterprise fund for water supply. water supply. Again, administration, we need to make sure we have the staff here to meet the needs and requirements of our citizens and business partners. Again, another slide that shows, you know, permit counts, or lot counts. You can see Meridian's clearly leading the pack here. We see this because you guys see the applications every week. You guys see the development agreements every week. We are making these choices, so we must make sure that we also make the choices to set up the city with the resources necessary to meet these decisions we're choosing, we're selecting. There's one item on there that says, recorded lots. We're forty percent of that, so that's the five hundred and thirty-two number. Boise has eight percent of the total request. I mean, i- it's amazing the amount of demand and desire to do development here in the city, and we're seeing that. Again, I'm showing you these graphs just to kind of let you know, these decisions not only impact today's decision, but five years, ten years, you know, twenty-four months. And the budget that you have tomorrow is, you know, just twelve months at a time, but we take these data points into consideration as we develop the budget, as we develop our five-year plan, and we develop our ten-year plan. We need to make sure that we set ourselves up for success. You know, Jeff Levy's going to need services, you know, everybody needs this. So again, I just want to, you know, point out that, that, you know, we make these decisions for growth, let's support these decisions with our budget so that we can meet the demands that are going to be in front of us over the next number of years. So the question's, what's next? Are, are we done growing? You know, I just showed you a handful of slides that pointed in the direction of no. Mr. Burnt's saying, nope, not at all. This is where we've been. According to compasses is where we're going. We'll be one hundred and fifty in just a few years, guys. Hundred and fifty thousand people. Madam Mayor's been here a few years, I imagine she was probably here when it was fifteen thousand, twenty thousand, maybe? We're going to be one hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty, that's crazy. So with that, we need to make sure that the decisions we make today help the next council members in the year twenty forty. We don't want to, we want to set them up, set them up for success. Again, more information from that Land Data, Land Pro Data group. A few words I, I use, and I think we need to acknowledge, resource management, home prices and costs. You've heard me say it a few times so far. We need to make sure we have the resources available to provide the population increase, the demands that are being presented to us with applications, growth. We know that home prices are going up. Mr. McQuade was here last month. We're all paying the gas prices for our cars, so it's not only that, you know, Ty has to pay the gas prices, Roger Norberg has to pay the gas prices to manage the parks, you know, Laura Lamevei has to manage the utilities at the waste of our treatment plant to make sure she has the resources there. So again, these, this group is saying the same thing we're, we're showing. Things cost more, unfortunately, here at the city of Meridian, and we need to make sure we set ourselves up for that. So again, we've, we've seen the city grow tremendously. We have been the ones that have approved the growth. We need to make sure we support that for the future. We have huge projects going down south. We are promoting that, we're building the infrastructure down there, we know it's going to happen, we know ten miles is going to change. So we need to make sure we have the resources available so that Mark Niemeyer and his fire team can get out there. We need to make sure Jeff can get out there with his police staff to the south. We're now expanding our boundaries. So again, just setting ourselves up for success is where I'm, you know, I guess that's my soapbox. That's where I'm just asking you guys to consider. It's, we can make the decisions for growth, but we also need to make decisions to support that growth. This is my last slide for what is next. Again, nothing new here. Again, we've been growing, we continue to grow, and what, we know where we're going is we're growing, guys. So again, that's my presentation from a quarterly update. It's, it's a common theme. I support, and I echo what Mr. McQuade said, we're experiencing phenomenal growth, we're proving phenomenal growth. These are the decisions we're making, and again, in tomorrow's budget and our planning, you'll see that we're doing what we can to support this growth as we see in our future. Again, with that, I stand for any questions.
Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor, thank you, Todd, for your presentation. I always, these, these numbers and these statistics that you're showing are unbelievable, and I'm in the industry of growth, and so it's, it's even for me, knowing what those numbers are, just looking at, at them on, on this computer screen, just makes me even scratch my head harder. It's crazy. It really is, it's tough to fathom. My only thought is, I don't have a question, other thought, it, you know, businesses don't go out of business, or I should say this, businesses go out of business during good times, not the bad times. And what I mean by that is, when it's good, people have money, and, and it's there to spend. And so, it's during the good times that we need to watch what we spend and, and, and spend prudent, because it's during these times that we save, it's during these times that we prepare ourselves for the future, so that when times get bad, we have the means to, you know, continue at the level of service that we provide the citizens of Meridian. So I appreciate your, your presentation. It's, it just, it reminds me every day, save, save, save more, you're not saving enough, save as much as you possibly can, because right now, this is artificial. I mean, it will not last like this forever. It's sometime it's going to stop, and at those times, we just need to be prepared for it. So I couldn't agree with you more.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Burnt, I appreciate the comments, I completely agree. I think you'll see in the presentation of the budget tomorrow, we do take that in consideration. A few years ago, Mr. Borton implemented a request to have automated, automatic investment into our fund balance, so when the times come, we can hit those capital improvements when we need, save and spend model. Like you said, the times are good, take the opportunity to save a little now so we have it in the slower times. So I think you'll see the presentation. The budget that you have tomorrow is a balanced budget. We do take into consideration the, the responsibility of spending the citizens' dollars. We do take that as a high priority on our decisions that we make. We don't take it lightly that the citizens' dollars are there, like you said, they're making money, doesn't mean we need to take, be excessive of that. We take it with a high responsibility that we have to be prudent and to the citizens' tax dollars, and I think you'll see that in tomorrow's budget and along with our five- and ten-year plans. We, we don't take that lightly at all. So I appreciate the comments.
Budget's tomorrow, Mayor?
Uh, uh, might want to say, tomorrow's the budget, guys, one o'clock here, yeah. One PM tomorrow, guys.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Burnt.
Budget's tomorrow.
Thank you for that friendly reminder.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item A B is under our Community Development Department for Building Services Update.
Madam Mayor, members of council, so we're, we're one month in here. So we just wanted to provide a, a quick update, as we committed to, on the build-out of our Building Services Division, and kind of give you a quick update on that. You'll, you'll see some of Todd's information laced through here, and again, appreciate any commentary or thoughts you may have as we go through. So just real quick, here's the, kind of the things that we're going to hit, and this will be just a common format for you. We'll just go through each of these kind of line items and touch where we are to date on each. So wanted to just give you the, the Building Services perspective from the get-go. We've been obviously working pretty fast and furious, primarily in the, in the HR and IT portion of the build-out, as those are the critical pieces. So what you see here is we've drafted ten different job descriptions that would, you know, encompass all twenty-one positions. We've been working with HR to get those rated and out on the street, and you'll see a little bit more of a specific HR summary in a moment. We've received approximately eighty applications that we've reviewed, all of them, fifty-seven of which were for admin assistance, so we're pretty deep in that regard. Where we're shallow is the, the Plan Review and Inspection portion. The, the issue we have here is that it's the, you know, the, the technical portion, certification, the years of experience that we're looking for in these, in this area that's, that's presenting a problem. And, you know, to, to Todd's point, it's a tight labor market. So not only do we have a skill set that, that's limited, you layer on there that even those that have the skill set are gainfully employed, it makes, you know, rooting that, that person out even that much more difficult. We'll talk a little bit about what we're doing actively to, to address that, but that is a significant struggle that we're, that we're under. So again, anyone you know, send them our way, we, we need them. We're going through the interview process. We started interviewing today, I believe, so we're, we're going gung-ho on that. And we're also looking at various long-term solutions as well, and we'll talk a little bit more about those. We're also fully engaged in Plan B, so the, the transitionary, the flex, the, the, the means by which we can get through the, the implementation, and the RFQ process is, is going. We're, we're through the scoring, and now we're into the selection phase, and we'll hopefully get those contracts under, underway here shortly. Quickly, finance and purchasing, so this is an important element where, you know, we're, have the budget, and so we're looking to spend it. So we, we're spent here, obviously, for our, our reconnaissance and research, best practice, as well as we're starting to, you know, purchase the, the hardware, software, things of that nature that are going to make this happen. And then, of course, the big one is vehicles in this regard. So we have POs out on that, we haven't spent the money yet. We're taking a prudent approach. We, we want to get four vehicles on hand, of course, we have to equip them, detail them, you know, get the IT in them, make sure they're working so that when we have an employee, they have a vehicle ready to go. What we don't want to have happen is we order all twelve of them, and we don't have employees, and then we're just burning through warranty and other things. So we're taking a prudent approach here. We feel like we can get those in advance of when employees will come on, but we're, we're trying to approach that wisely. Again, we mentioned the IT critical piece of this, just giving you the, the hardware update. You can see there were monitors, computers, servers, switches, and patch panels, iPads, cradle point for the vehicles, telephones, et cetera. So we're, we're, we're going hard on that. Software, of course, this is the, this is the big one. We, we've, have a signed work order with AVAL. We're able to, to get that in place and feel good about that. We, specific to Exela, which is already under contract, we, we had to expand that, so we had to adjust our master agreement with them to accommodate more licenses and, and usage. So you can see there, we, we're, we've gone through that. It's not necessarily an increase in cost, it's just a proportional cost. We have more people, so we need more, more licensing there. Kind of, the software continued, specific to the, the Plan Review software. Again, I mentioned the scope of work that, that we're, have in place. We had our kickoff meeting on the first, and we're working with a fantastic PM from AVAL, Richard Speakman, who's been very responsive to our needs. The one thing that we are trying to get hammered out with him right now is our project plan. So it's basically, when can we expect X, Y, Z, and when? So that, that's forthcoming. We've already tipped up the, the development environment, so that was concluded on the eighth, and then we'll, we'll look to do the production environment in July. We're going to, we're going to have them on-site here towards the end of the month, and again, just looking to, once we kind of get this ball rolling, put some, some hard deadlines to every specific detail of the software rollout. But as, as it stands, you know, Dave and Christie are managing this very well, they're in constant communication with them, as, as are we, and being very vigilant in the IT HR, kind of circling back to this, just wanted to give you a taste of some of what, what HR's been doing. Can't, quite frankly, can't thank everybody enough, everybody that's been involved in this, IT, purchasing, finance, Public Works with the TI, certainly the Community Development It's, it's intense, it's a lot of work. And so you, you see here, we're, we're all over the place trying to get the word out. Obviously, we're doing all we can to, to get our own networks engaged, posting on social media, working with our stakeholders to ping that vein as well. And then we're trying to innovate, because quite frankly, I think that's our long-term solution, which is, you know, how do we create a sustainable model within the department? So we're training our own folks in our own way, and in our own culture. So significant needs there. You know, does it mean more ca- more for, for wages? Does it mean, I'm not sure, but we're trying to do all we can to, to get good applicants in the door. But again, can't thank our partners enough.
So is poaching another word for innovating?
No, that's just smart.
You put it on the, the slide, I mean, so.
Yes, we are doing that, so. Again, I just wanted, wanted to express to you that this is, this is a concern, and we are in a robust process to try to address it. It's just, it's, it's tight, to Todd's point. On the TI front, we have Max and Alex, and Public Works has been fantastic in this regard. We already have the space cleared out here from the storage that will become the production room. We have some of the HVAC controls executed, flooring contractor walkthrough, as well as some of the, basically the other portions of the work bid. We've had some walkthroughs there, which has been great. So we're feeling good about the, the timeline. Max asked all of them, you know, is there any concern with our, with our timetable? And fortunately for us, there, there wasn't concern there. And then lighting as well, trying to nail down which way we go, do we go fluorescent or LED, and the cost implications of that long-term. So feel good about the, the tenant improvement. There, there will be a likely transitionary period, when that's, when we may have employees kind of on top of each other in the department while that build-out is happening. But we're prepared for that, and we're, just want to get that done right, so, and cost effectively. With that, that, stand for any questions you may have? Anything you'd like to see in addition to what we've provided? Obviously, once this kind of gets into full swing, and we're actually doing our own work, this will morph into more of our, you know, our earlier discussion on, you know, metric and measurement, and how, and timelines, how, how quickly are we turning things and the quality of those things? So more of an implementation summary, obviously, to date, but you'll start to see this morph as the, as the division grows and gets built out. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Cameron. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Milam.
I vote LED. Thank you, Cameron.
Thank you.
Thanks for letting me have a vote in that.
Got it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Yeah, you haven't seen the number yet.
You haven't seen the number yet.
For long-term.
Okay.
Oh, sorry. I was waiting for the rest. Mr. Burton.
He's finished. One of the things that I'm sure is part of this long list is that is the culture that you're going to foster with all of these new employees and the customer service focus. There's a huge pressure on you to be really fast in getting things done. But, probably goes without saying, but to ensure each new employee appreciates the culture you're trying to cultivate, kind of that Meridian, the Meridian way and how they're going to be tasked with serving the customers. That's critically important, obviously, on your radar, but that needs to be emphasized from day one.
Excellent. Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton, appreciate that comment. That is something I personally take very seriously. So, as we hire, we've got to hire the right people. Do they have the qualities, the intangibles that we need? You know, work ethic and integrity and the ability to, you know, strive for growth, you know, even in their own person, deliver a timely work product. And so, those are, those are things that we're definitely trying to instill proactively in the department.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Cameron.
Lot of information in that update. Item 8C is under the nondiscrimination ordinance discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
I'll kick it off, but I'm going to come down here and face you. So, Madam Mayor, I'm down here because I don't like talking sideways and facing everybody. So, kind of the work continues. One of the items that, when I became council president, that we talked about trying to do a little more frequently is get some of the ideas and passions of all of the council discussed and addressed. And try and do it in a, kind of an open forum, see what ideas rise to the top. And, we've gone through a number of those, at least have started on them. Some of that list includes the second post office discussion, the election process, how we elect our city council candidates, use of park space, or excuse me, parking lot space from the former Parks Department. And, we've done those, we've done those here with a mindset that we're trying to encourage each other and have open minds, challenge each other and some of our thoughts and considerations. So, that process is going to continue. We have several more coming up, but today's topic is in furtherance of that effort. And I referenced briefly kind of the open-minded perspective we all take when we address these things. And one of them, as I went through it, I thought was of particular importance. It goes back to the election process that Councilwoman Mylum had brought up, which since our last meeting, I've gathered more information and thought more about it. I think the perspective that you've raised has more legitimacy, maybe more appropriate than I even first thought. So, I think it's worth continuing to explore, quite frankly. And more information comes to light from the community. So, positions change, but that's what this whole process is about. So, one of the things, when I spoke to all the council members and gathered was amongst those ideas, is revisiting the nondiscrimination ordinance concept. As you recall, the city went through and adopted an ordinance for city employees that encompassed some of the purpose and goals behind such an ordinance. It seems to be appropriate and there's multiple requests from our council to bring this up and address a nondiscrimination ordinance citywide. Focusing on housing, employment, public accommodation, making sure that we lead the right way and take appropriate action. There's no time better than now to get this done. So, that's why it's brought up today. We want to get collective discussion, not necessarily on the substance and the details of how this would proceed, but some collective direction from all of you to do so. I'd like to move relatively quick. I think government often can move a lot quicker than they do. In a lot of these areas that we're going to discuss, both these past areas, post office, election process, use of the park and excess property, how we dispose of property, cleaning of our air. There's a long list of things and we're going to talk about them all. But, for now, I'm asking for some collective direction to proceed forward with the nondiscrimination ordinance. If we were to do so, here's kind of a template of a process. In the month of July sometime, we would have a first read of an ordinance. Between now and then, we have it drafted. A lot of the work has already been done. We're not reinventing the wheel. But, in July, have a first read. In August, have a second read and a public hearing and take action in September. It's a 90-day process, multiple reads of a drafted ordinance. Everyone provides input, the public provides input, and then we take action in September. I don't think any quicker is really feasible to make sure it's done right. But, that seems, it seems definitely doable. It very well may be long overdue to have accomplished this task, but nonetheless, we're going to get it done, in my opinion. So, that's the scope of today's presentation, asking for general direction to proceed. And if so, you'll see drafts prior to a July meeting. We'll be working with legal, be working with police, again, not reinventing the wheel. Other communities have done great work, taking the laboring oar on this, on this good project and will benefit from a lot of their good, hard work. So, with your direction, in July, you will see that first step of the process. Stand for any questions?
Counsel questions?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. L. Roberts.
No question, but I'm just happy that we're proceeding on this. I would definitely like to see us go ahead and have that discussion in July and next step.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Been a long road, but I, and I realize this shouldn't be, this really should be a state issue so that it can be handled properly. But, it looks like the state isn't going to do anything about it. Maybe if enough cities come together and get on board and say enough is enough and this is a human rights issue, then maybe the state will do what they should do and pass this. So, I'm all for pursuing it and hearing the public comment.
Mr. Burton.
You know, I know of cities that have approached this and, I just say that they could have done a better job. And I know of cities that have approached this topic and have done their due diligence and have done a spectacular job. And I think they've crafted an ordinance that very much benefited their cities. So, my question to you, Mr. Burton, is have we contacted or do we have plans of reaching out to different cities to sort of what you said, you know, take, you know, learn from who's not done it the right way and also those who have done it, you know, that have done it in a way that's benefited their cities?
Madam Mayor, yes. Yes. That's already been done. It'll continue to be done. We've already got a draft of this even prepared, which needs to be vetted and run through the course. But, that's kind of a culmination, at least a first crack at learning how other communities, not only the substance of what the ordinance would look like, really the process to get there that makes it effective. That gives all of us good input from the public and an opportunity to make the right decision at the right time, for the right reason, in the right way, so it's successful going forward. So, yes.
Madam Mayor, follow-up? What was the, you know, I think this was first brought up. And I remember in a debate during my campaign, this was one of the questions. And I think there wasn't a single person that was, you know, that was against it. But, has, what has been the community's point of view? What has been their response to us? I know that we did a citywide survey last year and I know this is one of the questions, but what has been the response from the citizens of Meriding in the past in regard to this specifically? Has it been welcomed? Is it that they want it or?
Madam Mayor, I think track it's been all over the board. It really has. We really haven't gotten to this stage, quite frankly, though. So, part of this process and gathering that public input at this stage will be important for all of us.
I think in the city survey, it was fairly neutral, 50-something percent.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Mr. Burton, can you maybe walk us through kind of the mindset for this three-month process? So, first reading in July, second reading in August, action in September? I can't recall a time that we've kind of looked at policy over that long of a period of time. And I'm just curious where the intention is coming from and what we're hoping to gain by what appears to be a very long and drawn-out process?
Madam Mayor, don't call me Mr. Burton, call me Joe, Luke. So, the intent is assuming that it's going to require perhaps a little more public input than some of the other ordinance that we passed that might not have as much public interest. Things can go faster. They certainly can. But, really, the goal of it, not necessarily setting hard and fast certainty, but putting some structure, right? One of the goals of trying to have these types of discussion amongst us and take action on policy that any of us think are important, is that we set an end game and a due date. And we meet it or we address whatever circumstances prevent us from meeting that date. So, it seems as though, again, because we're not taking the laboring oar and a lot of the underlying work, that it's feasible to do, but it's also an important issue that we might have a lot of public comment on that might necessitate stretching it out those 90 days.
Any other, yes, Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Burton. You had mentioned a few of the points that are going to be in employment, housing. Can you hit me with the rest of those again?
So, Madam Mayor, that's the question that we haven't answered, right? There's communities that have included and excluded certain components of that. Housing, employment, public accommodation are primary areas to focus on providing that discriminatory protection. But, there is some variety in how other communities, not only in Idaho, but outside of Idaho, have addressed it and why they have. They've received public input, which has emphasized one area perhaps over another or perhaps a fourth area. I think that's the information gathering that we need to do, which probably is what necessitates kind of the longer process to make sure we've captured the best intent.
Madam Mayor, follow-up? What does public accommodation mean?
Public facilities. Facilities where the public is invited.
Just owned by the public, but like a business? Madam Mayor, then, would we, I'm hesitant to move forward on that issue, given, you know, that we're not, we don't have a firm answer from the Supreme Court as to the constitutionality of, you know, being able to tell a business you can't discriminate. We know that in that instance, in that circumstance, you know, you would be able to claim religious reasons as to why you don't want to serve somebody. But, it didn't really answer the question more broadly, that, really, that we need. And I am, I'm never in the mood for telling a business how they're going to conduct their business, who they're going to serve. I think we're asking for some chaos in this room that isn't necessary. Again, I mean, I've, no one has ever come into, I mean, we have 30 minutes open at the beginning of every meeting and no one's taken advantage of that to come and say, hey, I wasn't able to get this job or I got fired from this job because, or I wasn't able to get this housing because, I mean, I imagine it exists. Sure, that's why we're having that discussion today. But, I don't know if the problem exists enough or is obvious enough for, that there's no, I don't see anybody asking for it. You see us electors looking to do something, to do something. I mean, are there examples others have seen or know of here in Meriding that this is a problem that we need to solve?
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
I have heard some instances where it has been a problem. One big issue, though, is it's very difficult for these individuals to come forward because there is no protection, there's retaliation, there's, there are a lot of issues that, it's not as easy as coming to a public hearing and saying, hey, I was discriminated against because of my behavior. They're subject to, you know, harassment and judging all the time. And so, it's not, it's just not as easy as that. And maybe we have a public hearing, maybe we'll get some people to come up and be brave and be willing to do that. But, I don't know how large of a problem it is, but I have heard that there definitely are. And whereas we're the second-largest city in the state of Idaho, I don't know, there were 13 other cities. How many other cities have done it? I just, I think it's important that they're heard and, in my opinion, get that protection.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I think a point that's important for us to remember as we embark on this type of journey related to these issues is today we're just talking about, should we continue to have the conversation? Should we invite the public to participate? Which I think would give Mr. Palmer the opportunity to hear from people. We all are elected because people in the community think that we're a mechanism for them to have their voice heard. I, along with Councilwoman Mylum, have heard from some of ours in our community that have felt they have been on the wrong side of this law and would like to have the opportunity to have their voice heard. Whether they choose to participate will be incumbent upon them. But, I think today's discussion isn't, should we implement a nondiscrimination ordinance or should we not and what it should include? But, rather, do we as a council, as a body, support moving forward in the discussion, inviting the public to participate, looking at something that is tangible as far as ordinance language, that we as individuals can say, yes, this meets the needs of our community or no, it does not? I think that's really where the discussion is today.
Madam Mayor, that is spot-on. That's the direction. There's a lot of discussion to come forward. We can talk offline because it takes, it'll take a lot more time to get into the weeds on kind of the legal landscape of this. I can tell you my perspective, any argument that its discriminatory practices are too rare or they're not frequent enough are absurd, quite frankly, in my opinion. And if it's one, it's one too many and it has no place in the city. That it's got to be part of our discussion down the road. We're just at this stage looking for direction to proceed forward and continue that dialogue, so. Forward consensus to go? And lots of debate coming forward. And that's part of my comment, my last comment is kind of the open-minded perspective we all have as we go through any of these policy discussions, whether it's a election process or discrimination ordinance or whatnot. I think that's one of our charges, is to have that open mind and open ears and hopefully we go through this process with that in mind, so.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
The thing is with nondiscrimination laws is that you're just trading an opportunity for discrimination from one person to another. As it stands right now, a business has the opportunity to discriminate against somebody at their own potential loss of revenue. But, if we put this kind of thing into place, then we're discriminating against the business owner's right to decide how they're going to conduct their business on. And so, I would just hope that, you know, the language is drafted or whatever draft that we present to the public would include a clause for religious freedom, frankly. For somebody to be able to say, you know what? Long before this was ever, anything anyone was ever concerned about, this is how I stood religiously. And that hasn't changed, just because somebody wants to come, cause a scene, they shouldn't have to change their ways.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Councilman Palmer, I completely respect your point of view. And I would hope that you would debate this, you know, in a month or two and we'd talk about it, you know? And so, I mean, I understand where you're coming from and I'm not saying I disagree or agree or whatever. But, I believe that what everyone's saying is that let's just talk about it. You know, let's get the public input and...
talk about it, you know, let's get the public input, and see if it's something that we're going to do. And I don't think the discussion is going to hurt the situation, or, you know, move us backward at all. I think it's always awesome to listen to, you know, listening from the public to see what their point of view is, and discuss amongst this body. I think it's healthy, and hopefully, Councilman Palmer, when that time comes up, that you'll continue to express your concerns, the way you have today.
First. Okay, thank you.
Item 9A is, has been requested to vacate from the agenda, and so we don't need a motion for that. Item 9B is ordinance 18-1784. Mr. Clerk, will you read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1784, an ordinance filed H-2018-0016, fire station number six, for annexation of a parcel of land shown on record of survey number 9227, recorded as instrument number 112056125, Ada County records, located in the northwest quarter, of the northwest quarter of section 24, township three north, range one west, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 1.99 acres of land from RUT to R8, medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
You've heard this read. I don't see anyone wishing to hear it read. I have a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Move that we approve ordinance number 18-1784 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion in a second. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes. 9C is ordinance 18-1785. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian ordinance number 18-1785, an ordinance filed H-2018-0012, Oberg subdivision, for annexation of a parcel of land, being a portion of Government Lot 3, located in section five, township three north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 4.787 acres of land from RUT to R15, medium-high-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code, providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission, as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Okay, counsel seeing no desire to hear it read.
Madam Mayor?
Ms. Mylum.
Move that we approve ordinance number 18-1785 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 9C. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carried. Any items under item 10? Counsel, we do have some upcoming events for Mr. Burnt, just budget workshops, start tomorrow.
Thank you.
Wednesday, 1 to 5, and Thursday, 8 to 1. We have our comp plan listening sessions that kick off this evening from 5 to 6, and tomorrow evening from 4:30 to 5:30. There is a Father's Day weekend classic car show at Meadow Lake Village that you have all been invited to from 10 to 1, and we have a dedication of the Meridian Mill mural on the Zamsos Building on Monday from 5 to 6. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Move we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206, 1A, B, D, F, and J.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
All ayes.